Smithville Board of Alderman Media is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to its states.
Sorry for starting a little late. We had a executive session go a little long. Item number three on the agenda, we have two proclamations. We can do pictures and stuff afterwards, but the first one is for Older Americans Month and the second one is for National Police Week. I'm sure Tony's here to receive that. We'll take care of that at the end of the meeting, but those two items are this week. Police Week is the 15th through the 21st, and this is Older Americans Month. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. You have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number five, EDC report. Alderman Hartman, do you have any items to report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. EDC met, pull that up here. And we did nominate a vice chair, which would be Steve Langley, so we nominated him to be vice chair of the EDC. We also discussed goal setting and defining roles and responsibilities for each of the EDC members based on the comprehensive plan. We did not actually come up with any assignments in that meeting, but we did talk about that. And we also talked about having guest speaker GK Callahan, I believe is his name, from University of Missouri Extension Office, Clay County, to talk about what they serve. So hopefully he'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is City Administrator's Report. Ms. Wagner.
Mayor, there are a number of items included in the City Administrator's Report, updates on parks and recreation and public works projects. I would just suggest that if you haven't had a chance to take a look at those, do. It is out on the website along with the agenda, so members of the public can look at that as well. I want to highlight two items. Number one, we did again receive the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award. I want to publicly thank Stephen Larson and our finance staff. That document has evolved over the years. I've been here for a little over five years now, and every year Stephen and the finance staff work to make improvements. I really want to highlight the fact that this year's notes and evaluators commented and gave us outstanding ratings in the areas of our capital program on charts and graphs, understandability and usability, and overall communication device. This is an important tool for what we work through throughout the year and appreciate Stephen's work in making sure that that is a communications and information tool for the community and transparently provide information on our budget. So Stephen has already started looking at the feedback from reviewers and trying to figure out what improvements we can make for the next budget. So appreciate that work. Also do want to note that later this week, World's Her Canvas, the public art that will be provided through the Creative Cities Alliance Sculpture on the Move project, is scheduled to move in May 5th, so that's right before activities this weekend and throughout the month and throughout the summer. So those are two things to highlight, but as I indicated, there's a significant amount of project information in that report as well.
Thank you. Good work, Stephen and your team. Any questions for Cynthia? All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2992-23, amending the conceptual plan for Fairview Crossing, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Wilson?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, do we get any more public comment on this one? Okay, so first one, Alyssa Baker. And I know it says on the card, but just so you please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. If you need additional time, please let me know. Microphone. Hang on, hang on one second. There you go.
I didn't have to have that.
So people online can hear and a couple other.
I understand. Alyssa Baker, 411 Northeast 144th Street. I just want to express my opinion. I was asked the question of why I thought the development of Fairview Crossing of apartments and multifamily homes was a problem, and I'm going to read my reply. So I think the sheer numbers of people in cars close to a rural setting is concerning. The traffic it will create is problematic. It is very difficult for us just to even be able to get out on 169 a lot of times, and even more so on weekends when we have a lot of lake traffic and that. But we're going to add a lot of traffic to trying to get out of that area. I'm concerned about families in apartments and multifamily dwellings with little to no yards. We are a rural setting down beyond. We have arbed wire, electric fences, large animals. We've had kids come already from different places that we've we're just concerned about safety, concerned about noise pollution. And I have a question. Has a study been performed to understand the environmental impacts on the land? That would be interesting for me to know. I think that single-family homes would be a sensible, practical practical and reasonable transition. And I do plan to further seek out information and impacts with respect to this matter, and I encourage the board to do the same. And one other note, I was here last for the last meeting, and that was really, I found out about this maybe a day or two before. I'm just wondering if there isn't a better system for learning about things. I found out when I spoke with our older people. And at that time, things were still developing and no one really knew anything. And then I learned on a Facebook page, a Smithville Facebook page. So I know that legally people don't have to be notified unless they're within so many feet, 180 something, I think. But when you're looking at 53 acres of development, it's going to affect more than the 180 whatever feet. So it seems like maybe there is a better path to notifying or people being able to find out about things like that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Doug Orton.
Doug Orton, 1,000 Northeast 145th Terrace. So I live at that end of 144th, also next to Alyssa. And we've been neighbors for a long time, 36 years. There was three families down there. And approximately two or four years ago, they subdeveloped another seven lots, and now we have a call, five and a half houses. One isn't quite finished yet. But we've seen a tremendous increase of traffic on our road. It's taken a real toll on the road. In fact, we've had our aldermen, both Marvin and Leah, out here recently to discuss our concerns. And the city has tried to do some things, but I feel that they've come up short on maintaining the road, giving us adequate representation of the city. You know, all this is going to happen right in front of us. It's going to put more traffic on our road. People are going to keep coming down our road. I also feel that this land would be better suited for single-family homes. We've all had single-family homes down there. That's what we paid for. Now we're buttoning up, I think, 316 dwellings. And I have concerns. We don't have cattle anymore, but I do have concerns about people wandering. It's happened before. Start walking and they just all of a sudden end up on your property. And I also have concerns about the stormwater. We have issues with presently with stormwater runoff. And I don't think this will help. I think this is going to create more stormwater, although there is a nice plan in place, and I've tried to read through it as good as I can. I'm not an engineer, but it sounds all good. But the fact of the matter is, you know, we're going to get more rain and more, more rain comes downhill, and I'm downhill. So I'm afraid that we have crops down there. We've had a one year particularly where we get so much stormwater runoff where the farmer wasn't able to put in his crops for that year. And economically, that affects me. So those are my concerns. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Constance Ward. Is she on the iPhone or is it? Constance, you on? Well, she's also on 11. She has to run. No others? Thank you. Open discussion of the board. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes.
This is an amendment to a conceptual plan. It had previously been approved. So with saying that, at this point, could this be rejected since the original plan had been approved through planning and zoning and the Board of Alderman?
Jack.
If this plan is rejected, the old plan stays in place. So it's the conceptual plan and zoning that were changed a year ago. We're all there.
And my understanding on this amendment had to do with the power lines and stuff, like where some of those were drawn into the other plan, and that it was correcting where those were drawn into the original plan.
Yes, and moving the, the North Road all the way up to Platteville or Central Bank of the Midwest instead of having two exits there.
Jack, do you remember when we did that original zoning and conceptual plan?
April of 22, when it went to planning.
April of 22?
Yeah, so it would have been the first meeting in May for second reading.
In that same meeting, Mr. Orton public commented as well, I believe, right?
I couldn't tell you. I didn't look back.
Yeah.
But there was comment. There was public comment at both of those meetings.
So it's been a little over a year?
Yeah.
This has been being discussed?
Yeah.
Not a, not a month?
Yeah, there, Jack. You got, there's a, there are going to be two entrances into this complex. Is that correct?
No, there's actually, the entire thing will have four.
We have four from 169?
No, there will be two from 169 and two on 144th.
Okay.
With the road being rebuilt down to the property line.
And eventually out to commercial.
Oh, yeah, no, I was.
And they're not going to go on to 144th. They're not going on to 144th until it's substantially complete, correct?
Yeah, the, the traffic on it would be, there's all those MODOT improvements that would have to happen.
The commercial will probably be one of the main.
Well, when it first starts, yeah.
Right, 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 when it first starts.
Yeah.
And a water study, I know you have to do some kind of water study, was runoff water part of the, the study?
Yes.
How did that come out to your knowledge?
That they have more than enough space in those two basins that they have to keep, to meet the city standards. They haven't designed them yet because they don't design until a plat is approved. The preliminary plat in this case, which is on later in the agenda.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. I just wanted to clarify what we were really doing tonight in comparison.
Alderman Russell, do you have a question here?
No, it's, it's fine. That cleared it up. Thank you.
All right, sorry, I had to make sure. Any other discussion? Clerk, please, call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving an amendment to a conceptual zoning plan for Fairview Crossing on certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the Code of Ordinances of the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Next item on the agenda is number eight. We'll have to do two separate readings. We'll take a motion to approve the first one. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2993-23 fiscal year 2023 budget amendment number four, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Russell, seconds. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget to add $240,000 to the expenditure budget.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve it. The second reading. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2993-23 fiscal year 2023 budget amendment number four, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye. Second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Wilson?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget to add $240,000 to the expenditure budget.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2994-23 repealing and replacing section 200 collective bargaining, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
I'll second, I'll second, Mayor.
Having a hard time finding the button today. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, just I wanted to clarify that I've read, and I know we discussed this earlier, that the way I read this, this replacing this section is that potentially the police officer below sergeant would be represented by the FOP and then a certain section of the FOP, and then above that, is that correct? Would be, would be represented by another section. Correct?
That is correct, and I, we do have Jeff Place with, who is our labor attorney. I just want to make sure that I'm speaking correctly. That is a correct assessment.
Yeah, it's the same.
We'll have you come on.
I figure I could just project.
But it doesn't, it doesn't get to online.
No, I, I totally understand.
Appreciate it.
Bad assumption on my part. Um, okay, so Local Lodge 50 is the lodge of the Fraternal Order of Police that would represent everyone. We typically, and I represent about a dozen cities in the area. I'm always on the city side. Sean McCauley is the attorney for the FOP. We like to have, at least I advise cities, we need to have separate bargaining units because the sergeants have supervisory responsibility over the officers, particularly like on weekends and at nights. And if they're all in the same local unit, they have the same union representatives, and that creates a conflict of interest. When we separate them into two separate bargaining units, the sergeants pick their own representative who handles sergeant union issues, and the officers pick their own rep who handles the officer issues. And that way, we avoid any conflicts of interest with the supervisory responsibilities.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, just for Cynthia or maybe for, for the attorney, my understanding, this has been an ordinance. We're just striking the fact of what the attorney talked about, correct?
Correct. The ordinance has been in place. The information that's included in your packet is the red line of those changes that are made. Those changes are, the original ordinance was approved in 2015. There have been some changes to state law. There have also been some changes, really kind of in best practices. As Mr. Place outlined, he represents a number of entities in the metropolitan area, and this brings us in line with the language in those other agreements, or excuse me, those other ordinances.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Six zero.
carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance repealing ordinance section 200 regarding provisions for collective bargaining with law enforcement personnel and enacting in its place new ordinance section 200.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 10. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution 1221 bid award number 23-05 Quincy Boulevard Waterline Sidewalk and Mill and Overlay.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution 1221, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 11. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution 1222 preliminary plat Fairview Crossing.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Second.
Any discussion? I know we had Constance sign up for this one too. Was Constance able to join? Jackie, I see iPhone. I don't know who owner is. No? Okay. So no public comment. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution 1221, or 1222, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 12. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number, or resolution 1223 Public Water Supply District number eight easement.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution 1223, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 13, resolution 1224. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution 1224, replacement and repairs of check valve, check valves and isolation valves.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution 1224, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 14. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution 1225 wayfinding sign guidelines.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know there's some members of Main Street, Gina's here and a few others. You guys worked really, really hard on this, so I appreciate it. All the work, there's a lot of meetings to come up with these signs, so thank you for that. I know Alderman Yulidol has been saying we need better signage for years, so hopefully he's happy with this. So all those in favor approving resolution 1225, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Yay, we have sign guidelines. Next item on the agenda is number 15, public comment. Did any others come in? No? Okay. Any online? Yep, yeah, I have a card here. So first, yep, yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and make your way up here. So first one is Deborah Garrison. Thank you.
No, it's all right. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Does anybody have any trouble hearing me? Okay, first of all, I want to thank.
One, one second. Could you first state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Debra Luann Garrison. My mother named me Luann. I don't know why. 161 East First Street, apartment 168 here in Smithville. Okay, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Bulleye for the hand that grips on my wheelchair because I went in his shop one day and I was trying to buy a pair that was much more expensive. He said, here, I think I have some you can have, and he gave them to me. I really appreciate that. Every time I have to grab them, you don't know how much I appreciate you. That being said, that's the last thing I've seen from this town in the way of handicap improvements. And we're having a problem because my neighbors and I, we have no way to get around except these wheelchairs, and we're bouncing uppity uppity down and down, and we've had damage to our wheelchairs because we're trying to get to the store, the closest store, which is Dollar General, and there are no sidewalks. There are no sidewalks to get us anywhere. You go down alongside the cemetery, there are no sidewalks. You go towards what they call cheap smokes, there are no sidewalks. We would really appreciate some sidewalks. Now, I'd heard that there's a comprehensive handicap plan and wheelchair accessible plan. I was wondering if somebody could clue me in as to where I would find that because I don't see so well anymore. Is there some reference I could make to, to find that online?
We could get you, we can get you that and we'll.
Yeah, I said Chuck could get her the, the transportation master.
We'll get you a copy of it too.
I really appreciate that because I, I don't see as well as I did. I've been hard on a lot of people around here. Mayor Bulleye's a lot older since I've been here. I've been living here 22 years. Poor Roberta back here, Roberta Loman, she's gained a lot of years, a lot of white hairs because of me. And I don't want to cause anybody else any more white hairs, but I, I would really like to. At one time, we had a handicap accessible board and I was on it. I don't know what happened to it. I got sick, it went away. If we could even get something like that going again and get people that are interested in, in pushing forward our agenda, being able to get around in this town, that would mean so much to me. I would be so blessed, and I would pray every night that God bless you people for blessing us because being handicapped is not easy in any town. This one is a lot harder because between the cows and, you know, well, we don't have cows down here in town, to be honest about it, but between, between all the problems that we run into, I would appreciate if we could get some help. And I hear that there's a woman tonight that might be interested in being on the Economic Development Council. I've actually met this woman two times. The first time I met anybody in this town that ever ran for anything, that actually came to my house and said, hi, this is my name, I'm running for something and I want to help you people. First time, the only time, 22 years. Why did it take 22 years for anybody to become interested in us? I don't want an answer. I just want you to put your thinking, put that in, in your, in your mind or in your pocket to think about later. Thank you so much for your time for listening to me, and I'm sorry if I go on and on.
That's fine, and, and we do. No problem. And we do have streetscape phase three under construction right now, which will get the sidewalks from Bridge Church Street to the housing authority. They're gone. The steps, the steps are gone. Thank you. Linda got us a packet too. I'm sure everybody has it. Give you guys a chance to look at that in a minute. Ms. Mains, you're up first. You know the rules. You've been here before.
Hi, I'm Amanda Mains. This is really bad. I live at 800 Northeast 194th Terrace, and I'm here to speak against Christine Bunch joining our Economic Development Committee. Ms. Bunch's behavior during her recent run for Alderman was abhorrent. It caused extreme division in our community, while she should have been on her best behavior. Ms. Bunch lashed out violently viciously at Smithville citizens who didn't always agree with her, someone as far as having to hire a lawyer to send cease and desist letters to stop her harassment. On February 24th, Ms. Bunch proudly posted one such cease and desist sent by a local developer to her public Facebook campaign page, then continued to use his name in future campaign posts in defiance of the order. I was targeted by her wrath in a very personal way. Ms. Bunch posted on my personal Facebook page on multiple occasions, calling me a bully after I asked questions about her campaign platform. On February 14th, I made a public Facebook comment asking Ms. Bunch to stop using me in campaign posts. In response, she did the unthinkable. Ms. Bunch tagged me in a post from her campaign page claiming I was not a Smithville resident in attempt to discredit my opposition to her candidacy. When I told her she was mistaken, Ms. Bunch responded with a link to my daughter's obituary with the comment, and I quote, "According to the paper, liberty was mentioned. As many of you know, my daughter Aon had brain cancer. This month is the five-year." This month is the five-year anniversary of her death. While Aoin was born in Liberty Hospital in two thousand twelve, my family has resided in Smithville since two thousand six, and my husband graduated from Smithville High School in two thousand two. In two thousand seventeen, Mayor Brian Fulmer officially proclaimed Aoin's birthday as Fight Like a Princess Day in honor of her battle with cancer and presented her with a key to the city of Smithville. Ms. Bunch did not know any of these facts, nor did she seem to care. Over the next several hours, Ms. Bunch used her campaign profile to harass me over my daughter's death, residency, and credibility. Many Smithville citizens came to my defense outraged that an alderman candidate would use a child's obituary as a weapon against a grieving mother. Ms. Bunch attacked them, too. Here are some duet quotes from Ms. Bunch's comments defending her decision to use my daughter's obituary to discredit my opposition. Quote, I'm just showing the public documents and that scares people. Quote, stop bullying me. Maybe you grow up and stop talking about me. Stop bullying people and be a better example online since kids read your posts. Quote, don't be offended when people fact-check newspaper sources. They get offended when I fight back. I'm the warrior. Quote, you continuously won't leave me alone. You continuously recruit other people to go after me. At this point, I'm totally used to it. I'm not going away. I promise you, I'll run again next year, too, if I'm not elected this year. I'm uncovering way too much with the city of Smithville. Imagine what my binders will look like next year's election. This is Ms. Bunch's defense for using my daughter's obituary to attack me. She called herself a warrior and a fact checker and promised to dig up more dirt for attacks against Smithville citizens in her quest for public office. I ask that you please do not add Ms. Bunch to the EDC. Someone who lashes out personally and publicly against citizens is not appropriate for the EDC, nor is someone who has active cease and desist letters from local developers. Ms. Bunch has done both.
Deb Dotson?
My name is Deborah Dotson. I live at two zero zero four Northeast one hundred ninety-sixth Place, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. I'm one of the ones that Ms. Bunch has attacked from time to time. But as my husband says, this is probably one of my finer Don Cahody moments. I sent emails to some of you aldermen and found out earlier that a lot of them weren't going through. So I created this packet. Not only are my emails included, but several others are as well. There is one from Jane Crampton, seventeen oh three Northeast one hundred ninety-seventh Court, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. That's in your packet. Another is from Sonia Kreitz, eighteen oh two Northeast one hundred ninety-seventh Court, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. And you will most likely be hearing from Mr. Kremenaker soon. I don't have his address, but his statement is in your packet as well to review. In your packet also, I have included Ms. Bunch's online petition for the removal of Cynthia Wagner, Smithville City Administrator, for being a non-resident. Let me read a little bit of that to you. There's just just one that just jumps out. I'm not going to further go into it with Cynthia, but what she says, it just becomes a business transaction and leaves opportunities for outside investors to infiltrate Smithville easily when laws and ordinances are valuable, vulnerable. Starts from the top, changes necessary. Sign a petition for your voice to be heard. There were thirty-three signers to that, remove Cynthia, which was inappropriate. But what really jumps out as far as the EDC is concerned is the comment for opportunities for outside investors to infiltrate Smithville. Infiltrate. Another recent one that Christine did was Christine Bunch in the A volunteer where she had a letter on her campaign site. Dear elected city officials of Smithville, elected Clay County officials, and elected state of Missouri officials. Right off the bat, the whole bathtub got put in there, everybody. She cites Cohen v. Cohen, three ninety-two U.S. eighty-three nineteen sixty-eight as a United States Supreme Court case holding that a taxpayer has a standing to sue the government to prevent an unconstitutional use of taxpayer funds. While I would like to believe there is nothing unconstitutional with the developers simply asking for TIF funds for Smithville taxpayers, I am curious to know if any violations have or will occur based on the current proposal and allocations. My question and some of the others in the packet have asked, is Christine Bunch trying to encourage taxpayers to sue the city of Smithville over TIF? Is there an allegation here that's being thinly veiled to say, hey, is there some corruption going on here with the TIF? The stated mission of the EDC is the Smithville Economic Development Committee is charged with the task of recommending to the Board of Aldermen policies and actions related to recruitment, retention, and development of Smithville businesses, as well as marketing and promotion of the Smithville community. Ms. Bunch, by her actions and words, has demonstrated that she is opposed to recruitment and development of Smithville businesses. She has been negative towards local developer construction proposals that would supply much-needed housing. She has promoted a divisive environment that has pitted citizens against cities officials and local developers. Her words, these opportunities for outside investors to infiltrate Smithville.
Deb, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andy Kremenaker, and I currently reside at eleven oh four Comeflower Street in the Wildfield neighborhood. I've come before this body to voice my concern and an easiness on Agenda Item number seventeen, which is the vote to appoint Christine Bunch to the Economic Development Committee. Our last municipal election in April, Ms. Bunch ran for Alderman Award One, in which I live. It's commendable for anyone to run from any office and to get involved in local politics. There is no greater honor in being elected or entering into public service as a career, as I did the as I did the latter for two years. What causes me the greatest reservation is how Ms. Bunch took feedback or alternate views during her campaign. One of the greatest indicators to the public on future behavior is how they interact with the potential population in which they will represent. Opposing viewpoints on different social media platforms that she was using to spread her campaign were deleted. Entire threads gone, her own comments deleted. I can go on ad infinitum. And with a story that another resident has shared, I am also a father who has a dead daughter, and I could not imagine what that resident went through. The pain I get every day is immense, and for that to be used is just, it is beyond words. However, I'll go on. Regardless of anyone's credentials, education, or experience, their conduct of behavior supersedes the ad forward mentioned. Based on her behavior and conduct towards local community developers, I can continue continuing campaign to remove the city administrator because they don't live in our community, and her vitriol towards people with alternate views brought me here to my first city council meeting here in Smithville as I am just moved here two years ago, and that I felt that I needed to speak here. Her expressed viewpoints and various developments not fit in with our city's vision. To thrive as a community, we need to embrace growth. And I fear the I fear for our community of Ms. Bunch is appointed to this position. Her actions and behaviors convinced me that she will not look out for the benefit of our community, and I urge you to vote against this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Kelly Kabowski, two hundred East Main Street. I am asking that the Board vote no on the recommendation for Christine Bunch to be a member of the EDC Board, one reason for numerous disrespectful social media attacks on city officials and community members. She has apologized for these comments, said she would change only to continue to post negative comments shortly thereafter. I am confident that her behaviors will not change and being part of the EDC will not create a positive environment for future endeavors. Please vote no and show her that you are not a yes, yes, yes board. Thank you for your time and attention on the matter.
Chelsea?
My name is Chelsea Dana. My address is one nine four zero seven Mulberry Lane, Smithville, Missouri. I have not lived here my whole life, but my family has resided here, and I will be on the opposing side. I will vote or want you to vote for Christine because other people, as mentioned here, John Chevalier, if you're going to hold what other people are saying currently against Christine, you should do the same for him. He has done the same exact thing. We are not here to post and take our I was not planning on talking, but now I'm pissed. Um, I would hope that you're not deciding your decisions based on what's going on social media. We are here to disagree. You guys are all agreeing, voting the same. You're a board. It should not all outweigh the other. And if you're going to hold one person to one standard and not bring her on here because she simply disagrees, I'm not condoning comments on social media, but if that's the reason for you making your decision, then that should be applied to every single person. Because I know that there are multiple people on the board that have done the exact same thing, whether it's on social media or in person. So hopefully, I understand it's a social media thing. Comments are made. Things are taken out of context. People need to have conversations. People are here talking to you, providing feedback, and votes are citing. The scale is not balancing. That is your job to make sure the city is being heard. I do not feel you're doing that job. That's all I have to say because I was not prepared to speak, but I plan on speaking in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Jennifer P. S. Two oh six Hampton Drive. So I am going to say that I cannot defend what has happened on social media. I cannot defend what has happened with any other aldermen. With me, I have gotten into debates with ex-alderman John, instance. We see eye to eye. I worked on the HOA Board for three years. The people that came and complained and made the most stirring, the first thing I said was, do you want to join? Do you want to join and see exactly what we go through? Because it changes people's perspectives on the way that they hold theirself if they see exactly what a committee is going through. We all think that, you guys, I don't know what it's like to be an alderman, but if I get on this board, you damn well, please. It's going to change everything of what I thought. It's so easy for them to go in and say, yes, 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 all day. Do it. Put her on there. Let her be known. See if it changes. Show her exactly how hard it is to be on a committee, how hard it is to be in the city, and show her that it's not this sunshine and roses path, that you got to deal with people, yes. But if you don't let people who have a different opinion, the majority of the city committees and boards, it's going to look biased. Give a chance. Let somebody who has said things that they may regret, and they've made public apologies. We all get the best of our voices. We all get irritated. We all get heated. But at the same time, the city's job, the committee's job, everybody here, your job is to enlighten people and show them what it's about. You can't do that unless they're on that committee. It is not as easy as it looks. Alicia Neff will be the first one to tell you. There is a lot that goes into this committee, and I'm sure the other members who are here do, too. So don't, I'm not discrediting anybody. But my thing is, is take a chance on somebody. If they prove you wrong, I'll be the first to say, I'm sorry, I should have said that, but I think everybody deserves a chance, and especially when it's somebody who is so much against some of the things, let them see your point of view. They don't even know it because we don't see the bantering back and forth between the committee members. We don't know what you guys say behind closed doors. It makes a big difference when you see the full picture as a committee member or alderman for that, you know, whatever, whatever it may be. But that's my piece. Like I said, I'm not condoning anything that I said on social media. I hate social media for that point. Fifteen years ago, we didn't have all this stuff. Facebook wasn't as big. People got to go to elections without having all this crap out there. We got to be treated because of our face value, not because of some rumor that's out on social media. So, like I said, that's just my piece. Thank you.
Any others, Linda? Okay, next item on the agenda is number fifteen. Appointment of John Chevalier to the Planning and Zoning Commission. John served on the commission as a alderman as well. So the first appointment will be John Chevalier to Planning and Zoning. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Yes.
Alderman Shipley? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol? Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Jackie, you have a full P and Z again. All right, next item on the agenda is the appointment of Christine Bunch to the Economic Development Committee. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Yulidol? Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
No.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
No.
Question fails. Next item, any new business for the floor? With that, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned.